That should be. I have us unmuted, I think.
Yep. Peter.
Hi there.
How are you?
All right, how are you?
Good. The only thing we're trying to get is our owl to be a speaker, but that's okay. I'm gonna open the public hearing. For the Open Space Recreation Plan. And if we have any comments, we will take them now, since Peter's here. How you been?
All right, how about yourself?
Good. Snow in there yet?
No, but we're ready for it.
That's what happens when you live up above the clouds. I will let him run, run questions to Peter, that'll be fine.
Peter, maybe you wanna just give a quick little overview about the Open Space Recreation Plan?
Sure, are the, um, project consultants here? It doesn't look like it.
I can't.
He's looking for the project consultants. We're just trying to.
I don't think there's gonna be.
No.
Okay.
Um, hold on one second. I wanna get the audio so that you're coming through the owl, so everybody can hear. On the audio on the left, please.
Yeah, I just clicked on that and it just.
What's the schedule? Yeah. Um, okay, that's what we want, we wanna have.
Same system as microphone? No?
There you go, the next one down.
Yeah.
There you go. I think it should be good now, Peter.
How do I sound now?
Like we didn't do it right. Well, uh, yeah, there it is, and one underneath that one. One more down, no, oops. The echo above the LGTV. Yep. All right, let's see how that worked. Say something for us, Peter, and I'll see if it worked.
How are we doing now?
Looking with the asses instead, looking with the ass. All right. The Jane, you said to Peter.
Yeah, Peter, maybe you can just give a brief overview of, um, the Open Space and Recreation Plans instead of the first item that we're, we really probably should've done it the other way around, but anyway.
Yeah, I'll mention the NRI, uh, as well. So, um, I guess a good place to start and, and move ahead quickly from is that, um, this project came out of the comprehensive plan. And, uh, also you, you have a natural resource inventory that was done in two thousand and eleven. And, uh, also you had a Conservation Advisory Council. And, um, we never found a local law that adopted it. It was probably done by a resolution. Anyway, the, um, the Conservation Advisory Council, the town of Tustin became kinda inactive. And then out of the comprehensive plan, we said, um, you know, let's, let's, uh, reorganize that, uh, advisory council, so we did so. And once the group convened, I see some of them are, are here tonight, which is great. Um, then, you know, we, we asked ourselves, well, what are we gonna do? And one thing we did was we had some lectures from various experts. And then we, uh, also said we wanna do a open space plan and recreation plan, of course. And to do that, um, you really need an updated natural resources inventory. Uh, the, the maps were old, they weren't electronic, and it was quite some time ago, as I mentioned. So what we did was, um, we drafted a grant to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to conduct an open space and recreation plan along with the NRI, that's Natural Resources Inventory, uh, for the town of Tustin. And, um, the, the, uh, agency, like the uh, application, they typically do more scientific things, so we got funded for it, and, um, then we hired a consultant, that's MJ Engineering and, and planners. And, uh, one of the ways that led us to that consultant was we looked at a, um, a, uh, open space and recreation plan in, I think was, I believe it is Town of Bethlehem, up, uh, outside of Albany. And then we then got a dialogue, um, with MJ, and they really stepped in and tackled the whole entire project. Um, and we met numerous times with MJ, myself, and the Conservation Advisory Council. And, uh, what you see and, uh, is, is what we worked on for upwards of two years, I can't remember at this point, Jane, but, um, it was a very thorough process. We had at least two public meetings and got a lot of input from the community. And, uh, there's a lot of great recommendations in, in the plan, so, um, that's kind of a thumbnail overview. And, uh, it's, it's been wrapped up for some time now. I, I put the last comments in, in the summer, I believe. So, uh, I don't know if anyone from the council has anything to add, but, um, the council is great. The, all the members are very active, and they certainly help, uh, shape these documents. Especially the plan, of course, the inventory is, is factual, uh, if you will.
Just like to add that because of this plan, that, um, the town now has a relationship with representative from the New York State DEC. We have, um, met with, uh, representative from the Boy Scouts. And I think there were some as well. So I think that's important for the future and, um, yeah. I just wanted to add that as well.
Yeah, and, and just to tag on that, Jane, that's a good point. Uh, really, one of the major recommendations is for the town, um, to work closely with the EC and, um, the, the Conservation Fund as, as they presumably will turn it over to the state. And, and really, um, to, uh, have a say, hopefully, um, in, in what goes on, on that large piece of land in your town and spilling into other towns as well in the future. Um, so, so really, that's a major feature of the plan.
Another thing is, you did mention, but I would like to make public notice that, uh, the UDC did partially fund uh, this, uh, project as well as the National Fish and Wildlife. I guess, do we ask for any questions from the public?
Absolutely.
Are there any questions from the public?
Thank you.
Did anybody have an opportunity to read it?
I did.
You did? Oh, good.
The, uh, preliminary plan that was posted on the agenda tonight meeting, I actually downloaded that and I threw it in, uh, I was impressed to see that it included all the graphics that were presented here on the boards and so forth. Um, well done. Fabulous project.
Well, thank you. Well, there's two members right there, Donovan and Kathleen.
Uh, I'll ask one question that I'm sure you can answer, but I'll ask it anyway to put my mind at ease and so forth. You have any glimmer of an idea when they transfer of the property, where it's got property to the D, the might.
I, I don't, I don't know, but it, there is a New York State thirty thirty plan, right, that, um, the, the governor wants to have thirty percent of the um, land, vacant land in the state owned by the state by two thousand and thirty, isn't that correct, Peter, or something like that?
Yeah, that, that, that's exactly my thoughts as well, so to, to follow up on that, the state's now in the business of doing exactly what Jane said. Trying to conserve thirty percent of the state's lands and waters by thirty thirty. And, uh, there are some, some other programs, um, that I noticed coming out of the state to support this. So when you look at the numbers, this piece of land in the town of Tustin is significant, so I think to answer the, or to, um, maybe not answer the question, but to direct you um, in, in a way that could yield an answer is, um, the Division of Lands and Forests in the main office in Albany, there are representatives there that, um, could give us an update. We haven't really checked in in a while. And, um, so I, I think those two things together, the thirty thirty and the ability of anyone to reach out to, uh, the DC Division of Lands and Forests, I think could, um, may, maybe get a better sense of where it's at.
Good idea. Yeah. We'll do that.
Thank you.
The other thing that I'd like the public to know, although is that I think one of the reasons that the National Fish and Wildlife awarded us this grant was because of the work that the DEC has done in their, their plan, I don't know which plan it is, that showed that the property that the Boy Scouts own has global significance, and that was really quite outstanding. And because it is up now for different ownership, it's important that the, uh, that the specific ecosystems are protected. Amen. Did I say that right, Peter?
Yeah, and just to add on again, that plan is the two thousand sixteen New York State Open Space Plan. And, uh, it's broken into regions. And yes, in, in the description of this region, this, this property, um, gets, gets treatment uh, as a, a goal to preserve. And I believe that the current, um, version of the Open Space Plan, that being the update of the two thousand sixteen is also in process. Um, and you know, I, I don't mind making that call. Uh, I went to a, um, I'll just say a meeting a little while back outside of Albany at a DC, at, uh, Five Rivers. And there were some presentations about the thirty thirty. And, uh, I know a couple of the people in the program, so I don't mind, um, calling up to get an update on, uh, both those projects.
That would be wonderful, wonder. Yeah, that would be wonderful. Thank you, Peter. Peter knows our town so well because he's worked not only on the comprehensive plan, as he mentioned, I think, but he's worked on our zoning, um, rewrite. And, um, Peter said to me way back when, since I'll be working in your town, would you mind showing me your town? So I took him on a tour and he made sure that we went all over and, and he was impressed with things that I didn't even see, like the, uh, the ruins at the Luxton Lake, the, the dam, he stopped and looked at that, and so he has a great understanding of our town, so Peter is a wonderful researcher.
Peter, I'm gonna keep the hearing for the, uh, Open Station Recreation open and also integrate with it the Natural Resource Inventory Plan, so we can run concurrent. Question for you, Peter, do we need to do a seeker on this when we're done? Not tonight, but upon the adoption of the plans?
Oh, yeah, um, I, I believe that, um, what, that was being handled also by the consultants.
Okay.
Um.
I'm not sure about that, yeah.
Well, that's a great point. Uh, if, if it, uh, isn't being covered, then, um, I'll, you know, you, you can postpone the vote.
Well, we're, we're gonna do it in the, the next regular meeting to give time for any comments today. Or even at the end of the year meeting.
Yeah, it's, as I say, it's, it's been a while since this, um, pretty much concluded, and, um, I, I can get in touch with the consultants as well.
Are you under, under any more time deadlines with the grant work or anything like that?
Final report, um, it was on the Easy Grants, um, website. I did submit a final report. It was pretty much filling in the boxes that we had originally, uh, said that we would do, stated that we would do, and then the finances, so I did do it on time. Have we received any funding back?
I'm just looking right now to see if it shows up in there.
Carrie, who sponsored the bio blitzes? Is that the UDC or is that?
Um, question. We need to get a lot of funding from the park service, but that's not really, um, going to have a reward. Uh, so yeah, that's something we've actually been talking about.
That, that was, I think, an important part of the, um, the application.
Oh, really?
I think so, right, Peter? The bio blitzes that were done?
Well, yeah, to tie in what you had mentioned earlier, or sort of referenced, um, there are some significant species kind of in, in the heart of, um, not just the Boy Scout land, but some of the other, um, wetland areas and, and so forth, so um, nobody's really, um, poked around in there too extensively. One of the documents mentioned that they're not even necessarily sure um, all the species that are there, so the bio blitz, um, although it's more general, it, it's, uh, did get a lot of attention. It's, uh, it's, it's noteworthy.
My standing is, and this may be not related to this, but the transfer of the Boy Scout is ultimately to the state and the DEC, but there's a pass through phase, isn't there?
Well, it's currently owned by a conservation.
So that, yeah, they are in the. So, okay, so Phase B is where we're at.
Yeah, that is where we're at, yeah.
Okay, I, I just wanted to know. We've been.
And, and I would say still, the, although it's quite likely, there's no guarantee. They said that to us all along. It looks like New York State, it will become a state forest, but you know, in, until that's confirmed, there's always a slight chance. They told us that the whole way through.
A slight chance of what?
What?
Yeah.
Uh, New York State not acquiring the land.
Oh, okay.
The question.
Maybe that's something we should speak to our representatives.
What obligation is the, if the land trust under, if the state default? Do we know that?
What's the question?
What is the obligation of the land trust people if the state default in the science?
What is the obligation of the land trust, uh, if the state defaults?
Well, I would switch the word obligation out for mission. Right, so, so that, um, organization is in the business of conserving and, and holding. So, um, if there needs to be an alternative down the road, um, it would still be I would, as I would understand, under the mission of that organization. So no matter what happens, the purpose, and no matter what happens in terms of ownership, I would expect that the purpose would stay the same. And it's, it's not uncommon for these groups such as Nature Conservancy to hold land for quite some time before ultimately it goes to the state.
We have to appropriate the funds. Maybe that's something that we should speak to our representatives, so.
Okay. Over on.
Maybe a letter from the CAC? Does that make sense, Peter?
Yep, doesn't hurt at all, yep. I'll, I'll call the main office, but working it that way as well.
Okay. We have a.
Peter, do you have any other comments you would like to present prior to the closing of the public hearing?
Um, if you could just tell me the date of your next meeting?
Uh, we've got one meeting for the end of the year, and then we've got our normal normal meeting for, uh, the beginning of the year.
For twenty nine.
When is the end of the year?
The end of the year is the twenty ninth of December at
um, nine AM.
Nine AM?
January second, right?
At one PM.
We don't do, we won't do January second.
That's the order to say.
That's just a organization.
So, and then my last comment is I'll check in with the consultants and, um, and the status of, of the, uh, seeker and, and referral to the county.
Okay.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
So, do we want to? I think we, we, if there's no hurry for it, Peter, I think doing it during our regular January meeting would be, uh, more appropriate than the end of the year at nine o'clock in the morning.
And that, um, was that also one twenty nine?
That is going to be, uh,
fourteen. No, thirteen.
January thirteenth, six thirty.
Six thirty.
Yeah, that gives, um, the necessary time, not that they wouldn't turn it around sooner, um, for the county to comment if needed. And, and, you know, it's, it's been a while since, um, again, it's been a while since this has been wrapped up, so I gotta, I gotta check.
There's no other public comment? I would make a motion to close the public comments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
opposed. At this time, we will open the regular meeting for the town of Tustin for December the ninth. Bring me the pledge of the five. We have one announcement, and that is that we are currently working on system updates. Um, our new town website is now, uh, www.tanotustin.gov. Um, please note that dot G O V domain, but if you win it, we'll transfer you into it. What it has changed. We're also transferring, transitioning the town emails to the same dot go format, so exciting stuff you're gonna see in the future. Uh, payment of bills, the general account dispersed forty five thousand five. Thank you, Carrie. Forty five thousand five hundred and ninety three dollars and seventy nine cents. Highway thirty six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and seventy two cents. Water thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty two dollars and sixteen cents. Sewer eight thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars and twenty four cents, the lighting district two thousand four hundred and ninety nine dollars and twenty five cents for a total of one hundred and six thousand eight hundred and one dollars and sixteen cents. Uh, Kevin and Bruce did the bills. Any discrepancies, questions?
How does it do overall?
We're working on that. Yeah, I don't, I don't have that answer at this exact, but it looks like we are under the budget right now. Uh, motion to pay the bills as accepted. I'll move.
Can you second that?
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Or I oppose? For those with division reports that we do not do here, uh, they will be posted online. Kevin, water and sewer?
Um, I guess the big headline is that the Water Tower Project, the Department of Health and, uh, Delta Engineering are in constant contact, they're moving with that. Um, well, three limbing along, same level. Uh, well, two, this, the chlorinator business that needs to be looked at. Craig talked about some expenses we need to pick around. Those, those are the headlines, I believe.
Any questions from the board? Brad, Parks and Public Spaces?
Um, it was a, pretty much a wrap up of the year meeting, uh, no major decisions. We continue to discuss our goals for next year's um, monies and the projects we wanna take on. It's all outlined in the agenda.
Thank you. Um, Jane, anything to add with your shea sheen branch?
No, I would just like the board to start thinking if they, uh, if there's something that you would like me to apply for, uh, at Sullivan one eighty, generally that grant information comes out in January or has to be in. Um, I'd like you to think about that.
Are you accepting ideas now, or?
Yeah, sure.
Um, I personally think it would be nice, uh, as you suggested, to uh, consider having new bleachers for the ball field be part of the scope, since we had to take those away this year because our old set was no longer eighty eight.
So bleachers in the, um, bases.
Yep. If you wanna sneak the mound in there, that'd be great.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
It's looking at.
Pitcher's mound.
I think she's referring to the mound.
Oh, I meant the pitcher's mound, as long, keep it ball field centric.
You're such a job.
Right.
I didn't know there are so many different definitions for mountains.
Before this job, I would've thought candy bars.
Almond joy, can it be this?
Any other reports that I am missing? Old business? Do we have any? I did not have any that I recall that we needed to address. If not, I will go into new business, the five point one and five point two, the sewer district needs to put out bids for removal and disposal of wastewater filter sand and for pumping septic tanks, dosing tanks, and contact tanks and pump stations. Uh, both of these are for twenty twenty six. Um, when did we want those to come in, Crystal? Did, did they want them on?
That's right on there, January. Now on his.
So basically, you're saying if I read this, I would know the answer?
Yeah.
That was very polite, thank you. Uh, so I would make a motion to, uh, approve five point one and five point two as presented for their bids. Both of them to be open nine thirty AM Tuesday, January thirteenth, and awarded at the town board meeting uh, starting at six thirty PM on the thirteenth of January.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Uh, five point three is a Sullivan County Fire Advisory Board appointment for twenty twenty six. Normally, it's Craig Burkle, however, uh, late this afternoon, I did receive a change on that, and Craig has asked for Stephen Stewart to be the person that is appointed by the town board. So I would. So I would make a motion to appoint Steven Stewart to the Sullivan County Fire Advisory Board. I'd second. All in favor? Uh, I opposed.
I'm watching. We, we're watching.
Uh, five point four is approve the expenditures of highway monies for twenty twenty six. What we have for the highway, the general repairs, minimum of three hundred and thirty five thousand eight hundred and sixty four dollars, set aside to expand primary work. General repairs and sixty two miles of the town highways. They've got six roads in there for just four point nine three miles. Uh, expended not over the sum of three hundred and thirty five thousand eight hundred and sixty four dollars. Uh, these include Perry Pond, Hankins, Crawford, Half Moon, Homestead, and Dexheimer uh, with a hot mixed asphalt, and then we've got three point nine miles of chip seal for Perry Pond Forest Road Hoffman. Excuse me, Forest Pond, Half Moon, and Homestead. Any discussion on that from the board? If not, I would make a motion to approve the agreement for the expenditure of highway monies for twenty twenty six as presented by the town of Tustin Highway Superintendent.
I'll second.
All in favor? Uh, I oppose. We have a request from Growing Older Together. They want to utilize Little Lake Erie for a fundraising ice out contest, uh, instead of using the river. They would set up something like maybe using a Christmas tree with a tracker for when the ice goes out. They would like to get this going in the new year as soon as possible, so looking for consideration from the town board to uh, place an object, most likely according to them, a used Christmas tree with a tracker on it, so when the ice goes out, the tree falls in, somebody wins someone. Any discussion or questions on that?
The ice goes out. And that, it goes pretty frequently, the same, you know, as a.
That's gonna be up to them how they want.
Yeah, I'm just saying, how do you, how do you do it? I mean, the old thing was, the Eddie was so frozen, and you waited around till March, and it was a thing, I think Charlie naps.
Yeah, and everybody stood on the.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying, the, the, I like the idea, I think it's fun, but I'm just saying the pond does thaw and re-breathe and, you know, I'm just saying, so.
When the tree goes under, it's done.
Do we know why they are moving it from the river to Little Lake Erie?
Uh, I don't think they can find the old lion, and it's probably safer and easier on Little Lake Erie. That is just a, my assumption from the, this uh, talk I had with Joe.
Yeah, I'm just saying, because it was sort of a metaphor for old spring, you know what I'm saying? But the, the, the pond will turn to slosh and re-breathe any number of, you know.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be up to them to figure it out.
Okay, I, I, I have nothing against it, I'm just saying.
We should have Tommy speak with you because of something she said.
I can do that, but do we want to grant them permission?
I think it's a neat idea, yeah.
But the tracker has never presented any problems when it was on the river.
I don't know that they use it, they use the big line, if I'm right, right, they.
And a clock.
And, and a clock. And then when it, when they'll, when it fell, chop the block.
Okay.
Yeah.
And was it from Charlie's? I think it was, wasn't it?
I'm not, probably, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
The back of this barber shop, but they need to be able to harvest the trees, you know, when it's down.
I don't know how that works.
I think the block stop and it's. Okay, neat idea.
So I would accept the motion authorized by Growing Older Together to utilize Little Lake Erie for the purpose of having a freeze out contest.
Well, but if they decide to go back to the Eddie, do we need to re-approve that?
I'm just, no, the river's not ours.
Okay, we can do it, and the rivers, they're just looking for permission as we own the little lake. All right. I'll second.
Discussion. In favor?
I, I oppose.
Uh, winter restrictions, I'm not going to go through them all because they're the same every year. But the largest one of them is no overnight parking on Main Street from eight A, eight PM to six AM from November the fifteenth through the fifteenth of April to facilitate snow removal. Um, I would make a motion to present our winter restrictions uh, on the roads as presented in the legal notice for the year twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six. Unless anybody wants me to read this.
I'll second.
All in favor? I, I oppose. Is there any other new business before I move into public comments?
Um, two things. Um, we had a member of the Parks and Public Spaces Committee resign because they're leaving the area. So we thanked Suzie McDown for her time on the committee, and if anyone is interested, let us know. Otherwise, we will discuss it at our January meeting and have a recommendation no later than February, but we currently have a forum, so I think we're coming. Oh, and uh, with the discussion during the public hearing, uh, the last comprehensive plan was in twenty twenty, correct?
Twenty.
Twenty twenty one, so the next one, so the up, the next update would be twenty thirty one.
Thirty one.
And how long a process was it?
About a year.
About a year. All right, thank you.
Good to see you're volunteering early.
I don't know if this counts as new business, might actually be old business, but the mention of Stephen Stewart jogged my memory. Um, he, I met, I saw him on the street, and he asked about, remember, he came to the board and he said he wanted to put addresses on vacant properties.
And I did have a conversation with him tonight about that.
Oh, you did, okay.
I did, yeah.
Because I was like, what?
And the uh, the conversation I had with him was that their concern was people that didn't have, uh, driveways had no address for people to make a nine one one call.
Right.
Um, and the majority, if not a hundred percent of those people are doing that, are doing on cell phones, which are automatically tracked by nine one one, so they know where they're going.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't have an answer for him, and I thought.
No, he said today.
Okay.
Thanks for the heads up.
Sorry.
Um, any other new business before we open public comment? Public comment from the floor first? Young lady in the back? Uh, do we have anybody online that has any public comment? We don't take public comment for anybody that is south of Pennsylvania border, in case Mr. Coffin's thinking about it. Be kind for the board.
Merry Christmas.
That didn't get much of a response. A motion to. I'll second. All in favor? I oppose. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.